Let's start, City of Milton Virtual Common Council Meeting, Tuesday, March 15th, 2022 at 6:01 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Posted on Friday, March 11th at Hometown Ace Hardware, Milton Pigly Wiggly in Milton City Hall.
Thank you. And can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, just give me some sort of signal, a nice one. And if you can't hear me at some point, you can just all, I don't know what, yell.
Loud and clear.
All right, perfect. Uh, next item, motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll say it.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, we have an agenda. Pledge of allegiance. You can see the flag over Inga's shoulder and we'll do this together. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the ring.
For which it stands. One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all. Next time Chief Pickering is going to have to leave that on his own. All right, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council actions. So we have a number of items on the agenda tonight and uh, if folks would like to speak now on an upcoming agenda item, or if they would prefer till that agenda item is called, we're flexible. So Inga, do you want to take it from here for a couple of minutes?
Um, yep, there is currently no one in the waiting room. So if anyone wishes to speak now during the public comments, please just unmute yourselves and you can let us know that you'd like to speak. Oh, Bill Wilson is joining us for a second time.
Okay, all right. So we'll anticipate later on the agenda that we'll have maybe some speakers. Approval of the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, the consent agenda is approved. Item number six, presentation by YMCA of Northern Rock County, and I think we have some staff on. So welcome to our city council meeting and feel free to unmute, introduce yourselves. And we're ready for your presentation and thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
And I know Leah looking to share her screen eventually too. So I don't know if somebody needs good permission to that.
I just gave permission, so she should be able to whenever you're ready.
Perfect. Well, I'll start by introducing myself. I am, I keep saying the new CEO of the YMCA in Northern Rock County. Full disclosure, I've been here for about two and a half years, but I don't think the COVID years count. So I'm kind of docking that off a little bit, but I, I've been thrilled to serve. I came in an interim capacity. Um, it would have been uh, two, or actually three years this past February interim capacity. Was happy to kind of serve, do some best practice assessments for YMCA. I had actually come from a neighboring YMCA, uh, though kind of walk a water town wise where I've spent 25 years of my career. Um, and was given the opportunity to kind of walk alongside the current board and and really kind of digest what we needed to do to make some adjustments. And after I got done with that time here, I couldn't picture my life without this Y. So I applied for job and the rest is kind of history and I'm, it's been a wild ride, right? COVID, it wasn't anticipated in that equation, but I'm thrilled to be here and thrilled that I have the opportunity to kind of talk about what we have done even through COVID. So um, thank you for allowing us to be here. And I want to introduce, Leah, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, sure. I'm Leah. I'm the membership and marketing director for the association. So both branches.
Awesome. We just have a small PowerPoint we're going to share. I love images, right? That's always a little bit easier to look at than just, um, everybody's familiar with the Parker Y YMCA. We're just celebrating a little over seven years there. Um, I think I realized early on since I've been here that we built a Y in Milton and we built a Y in Milton, that we definitely have great opportunity that we need to expand on at this point. And that's really been our goal. Um, I'm going to go into later, our board has just approved a strategic plan that has some of those slayers in it. I'm really excited about what we can and will be doing. Um, so the next slide goes over our board of directors. I think for those of you that I haven't maybe made contact with, because I feel like I lost some time during COVID. Um, you know, our, our board had to go to work, right? There was a lot of things that we needed to do to be different. Those of you guys that have history with this YMCA, um, I appreciate you being patient during that time. Um, and I know that it wasn't an easy time either. So I will tell you, some of that best practice analysis that we did as an outside Y coming in was really talking about what went wrong and how are we going to avoid that in the future? Um, so some of those pieces include things like governance. Our board went to work and we did full scrub on bylaws. We really just did a lot of board and director building, right? We needed to make sure that we had the right team of people to move these Ys forward. Transparency was a huge word. I think we talked about a lot um, to ensure that everybody had access to the materials that they needed in order to move this Y forward and um, have really clear fiduciary responsibilities along the way. Uh, and that we needed to be more collaborative, but you know, my goal, even since I've been here is that we're repositioning this Y to meet the needs of the community. For me, it's not about running a gym and swim. Um, I'm not in the business of doing that. I'm in the business of being a reflection of how we can best serve the community. So that's really been my fundamental goals in general since I've been here. Um, and Leah is going to give you a little bit of a snapshot of the actual facility.
Yeah. So I'll admit, when I was working on this slide, I struggled a little bit because like Angie said, this Y has really gone through pretty major transition, maybe even two, um, one with our leadership and then two, a pandemic. Uh, so just kind of a quick glance for those of you who have, maybe have not been here before or haven't been here in a while. Um, we are currently sitting at around 1,700 members at this branch specifically. Um, and we like to track staff data with those members. They've, um, we've been tracking over 3,000 visits this, this year so far, which is really encouraging. I think people are feeling a little more comfortable on getting back to the gym and we're excited to welcome them. Um, we had a couple of areas where we had to pull back during COVID, um, as we pivoted to help the community in other areas. One of those things we did was to add 24/7 access so that people could come in after hours where there maybe were um, lower access times when people there weren't still using the facility to make them feel more comfortable. Um, we currently have tons of group exercise classes at both facilities. Specifically with Milton, all of our memberships are free, both locations. But in Milton, we've got bootcamp, Tai Chi, cheer yoga, tone and stretch, cycling, just to name a few. But they're, they're growing too, as we welcome more members in our doors. Um, another area we had to kind of hold back was our youth programming. Um, it was hard to offer sports. And what did that look like and how can we keep these kiddos safe? But it's been an encouraging year so far. We've, um, offered two new programs, one of them is Dodgeball. We've had over 80 participants this year in, in this new program, which is really encouraging. And it's fun to see that gym busy and bustling again. Um, we've got a new program starting in April, which is Kickball. So that'll be a first for us. I'm excited to see how that one goes. Um, a couple of things that we, we do and are just proud of and not necessarily need to promote, but um, just things I love to talk about is our partnership with the Milton School District. Um, we offer um, kind of a bridge to healthy living, both their staff and their students. We offer a cohort membership to all of their staff so they can enjoy the facility um, at a discounted rate. And we have two agency agreements that we currently have with the Milton School District Special Education Department. And MACAS, I think that's how you pronounce it, but it's an acronym for uh, Milton Ederton Community Areas or Alternative School, sorry. Um, just for those kiddos to get out of the classroom, um, out of the walls of their schools and come in our facilities and, and access those. Um, another thing we did during COVID, um, was, you know, we pivoted a lot, but one of the things we noticed was there are critical need for uh, blood donors in our community. So we were able to offer blood drives at both Jamesville and Milton, and we have another one coming up March 25th.
Along with that, uh, the next slide is really around our youth development agenda. And it's probably the area that I can tell you that we've put the most amount of effort in within the community. And for uh, for me, I recognized a need immediately when I got here, um, that we had already been doing early learning for ages three and up. But we really hadn't dabbled in a lot of school age work. Um, so you know, when we started meeting with district leadership and found out needs for after school, before and after school programs and engaging differently during our school times, um, we knew that we could kind of jump it right in. Um, I've actually spent most of my career doing a lot of that work. So it was very comfortable. Um, and then the pandemic, right? So we were able to really jump in during the pandemic to induce some work. So emergency childcare was one of those things that we offered. As everybody was going into safer at home, the Y remained open. We were able to offer emergency childcare for um, people that still needed to be at work, right? We, we had a lot of people in hospitals and healthcare workers. So um, like I said, we do have early learning for ages two and up. Our day camp program is thriving, which is amazing. Um, there's definitely, we hit it, we hit something that's a need, right, in the community and we're gonna really continue to produce on that. Um, so that's really for ages four to 12 years of age. Um, this next summer, we're going to be working on expanding that a little bit more. All of our schools out days, so when kids are not in session for school, how are we helping them during Christmas break and spring break? Um, and then our before and after school program, we did start that last year at Milton East and West. Um, West didn't have as much of a need this past year, so we are just at East, but they're both really, really thriving programs. I will tell you, because of this work, our Y did apply for um, what's called Beyond the Classroom. It was a grant that Evers had um, came out with this past July. Um, really around supporting and building capacity uh, to serve school age kiddos. And we were the great recipients of $500,000. So we, we've got some money to work with, right? To engage within our communities and we're going to continue to do that in both locations. The next slide just goes over a really, really short glimpse of what the strategic plan um, that, that we're really focused on over these next two years. We're kind of calling it the 18 to 24 month plan. Um, but I'll tell you, as you can see, the very first bullet point that sits there is really focused on community outreach and partnerships. We cannot go at it alone. Um, we have a building that is time, at times is quiet. I know I've had conversations with Al about green space. I mean, these are all things that Y is there and it's a community asset that we're able um, to make sure the community has access to. Um, expanding all of those youth things, um, like early learning, schools out. Leveraging assets is really about how do we better engage with our community for green spaces, for building space. I think every employer is looking at ways to attract and retain employees. That's always going to be an emphasis, especially in this climate. Um, and then really uh, the work around our chronic disease, our self-monitoring blood pressure that we're offering. Did you know that we loan out cuffs for individuals and show them how to use it so they um, can hopefully get on that prevention side of their blood pressure? Uh, we're, in addition, we're going to be launching diabetes prevention within both of our communities. And then the AOA part is really how we support our seniors, right? We love our seniors and we need to make sure that we've got tons of resources available to them.
So one of the pieces in our strategic plan was community outreach and partnerships. And so I'll kind of elaborate on some of the fun stuff. This is where I thrive. Um, Healthy Kids Day is a staple event for YMCA's and historically we've only had it in Jamesville. Um, it took a two-year hiatus because of COVID, but we're bringing it back this year and we're bringing it back to both locations. So Saturday, April 30th, uh, from one to three at the Parker Y will be a fun afternoon of just healthy activities for the family. Um, great way to get out and connect with your family and the community. Uh, we'll have karate demos, um, fitness demos, snacks, the library will be there doing story time. Um, a dentist will be there talking about dental hygiene, all fun, healthy activities for you and your family to enjoy. So save the date, April 30th. I'm super excited about this one. Um, the next one was kind of born uh, through COVID. And we normally have a fundraiser every year that's a sit-down dinner and obviously we couldn't do that with COVID. So we had to kind of pivot, our word of the last few years. Uh, County for a Cause was born because we needed to find a way to connect with our, with our community. Uh, so the fundraiser was a night of comedy. It was a drive-in style event where you drove in um, to enjoy some comedians. We had snacks, kind of movie theater type snacks two years ago. Last year we had a taco bar. Um, but just overall a really fun event that's raising money for a good cause. We're bringing it back this year again. I'm super excited. Third annual, save the date, August 6th. And last but not least, um, just another fun community event that we're excited about is our Business After Five, September 13th with the Milton Mayor's Chamber of Commerce. Um, come network with us. Oh, and this is my shameless plug, we're hiring.
But thank you for allowing us to kind of come in, reintroduce ourselves, kind of show you what we're up to these past few years. Um, and we're here, we're here to have a, a conversation. Um, if you're, I would love to meet each and every one of you. I invite you to come into the Y, email me. I'd love to uh, take some time to chat about needs within the community. So thank you for having us. If you've got questions, we're able to answer.
Thank you very much. That was a very nice thorough presentation and a nice snapshot of everything that um, the Y has been working on. And I'm really excited about everything you have planned. So thanks. Does uh, any of our council members have any questions? Um, I have one about the um, the Healthy Kids Day, like what time does that start?
It's from one to three.
Okay, got it. Thanks. Anybody else?
Is, what was the time for the comedy for Cure?
Um, Comedy for a Cause typically is right around dinnertime. I think it was 5:30 last year, Angie, correct me if I'm wrong. It was 5:30 to 8:30, I think. When does it get dark?
Leah, if, if you want to send just those um, dates and times to me, then I can get them out to council and staff. So then we can all um, put them on our calendars before it's too late.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yep.
So I, I don't have a question, but just to comment for sake of transparency. Uh, I have worked with the Y on their strategic plan, planning initiative over the last couple of months. And I know Anissa also sits on their board of directors. But just those two things are important to note, considering um, where we, where we used to be with the Y. Uh, they are making a strong, proactive and heartfelt uh, initiative to re-engage the City of Milton, re-engage the school district, re-engage the community. Um, I know that they will be shy in saying it, uh, and understandably so, but I, you know, we've all had these conversations internally. The relationship with the Y previously under the previous administration was a bit strained. And it is a huge goal of theirs and rightfully so, and I'm very happy to hear it, that they want to turn the page and be the YMCA that they always wanted to be and intended to be. The Y has not changed. What's changed is their approach towards the community and it is greatly appreciated, at least from my seat. And uh, Angie and I have had several conversations and working with their strategic planning uh, team about how to really truly strongly partner with the City of Milton and the School District of Milton. Uh, so we can all uh, you know, benefit from that relationship. It is an amazing facility that we are absolutely proud to have and uh, and, and, and to kind of re-unveil it is really important to all of us. And I'm, I'm happy that they uh, asked to present tonight and happy to continue to help them achieve their goals because as they achieve their goals, we achieve ours.
Building strong community. Any questions or comments from anyone else? Thank you. And we enjoyed your presentation and you're always welcome to come back. And we look forward to all of the activities that you have on your calendar coming up. Especially if you had like adult dodgeball or kickball or something like that. I'm sure the city would have a team.
I'm Wiley.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys. Have a great night.
Thank you.
All right. Discussion and possible action regarding approval for temporary class B liquor license in North Goodrich Park, Milton Farmers Market.
Jenny, do you want to take this one?
I can. Just put my information here. Okay, so the Farmers Market is going to be held this year in North Goodrich Park. And so we have Derek Kenzie from Open Doors Foundation on. I don't see Tyler on tonight. Um, and Tyler from From House Finds is also assisting with it, uh, so doing a joint event this year. Um, so they'll be in North Goodrich Park and they'll be using the community house. And then also the area around the community house um, for the food trucks and also uh, the car show. And part of that though, they would like to add in an area for serving beer and, well, just beer at this point. Um, so Open Doors Foundation is going to be, to be applying for that. Um, but there is a portion of it that we need council's approval or discussion on is because of the fact that the alcohol is only allowed in the community house and in the porch area. Um, and it's not by ordinance allowed in the city park. So this is what they are requesting. Uh, and then Derek can maybe fill in a little bit more.
Well, thanks Jenny. Um, yeah, adding on to this a little bit is uh, Tyler did a great job spearheading this last year uh, with the Farmers Market and uh, did a really good job. And then with that is uh, he learned from last year and is uh, wanting to make some changes that uh, uh, is even better for the community and, and everybody. Um, that's the, the ship to the Goodrich Park, uh, onto that. The uh, he came to me, uh, and we talked about it, uh, with my experience and stuff like that. And uh, also to kind of step the farmers market away from a for-profit business. Um, you know, he just wants to do as a work of passion and wasn't necessarily a revenue stream or anything like that for his business. So um, partnering up with myself, with the Open Doors Foundation, which is the nonprofit that runs a, Note 4th of July. Um, it made a lot of sense in a lot of different ways. Uh, one with my experience and uh, if you will, if you will, expertise, that's way overstated. Um, but my experience onto that to give him some guidance of if, uh, to give him a little bit of distinction on his vision of how to do it operationally and also having my experience to give him guidance to actually do it with them as well. Um, as well as the functionality of having the equipment, the fencing and, and all that, the wristbands and everything we need to, to make that a functional event without adding uh, additional cost to him. So it made a lot of sense and synergy and the uh, the other side of that too is the synergy to the open doors and to the Fourth of July. Is this actually going to turn into hopefully a uh, and to the function of the alcohol, say like the small amount alcohol and stuff like that we'd sell, uh, would turn into another income stream to help fund the Fourth of July even more uh, onto that. So that's the synergy between the two merchant together. Um, and so uh, the same procedures and things like that. Um, Tyler's idea of adding a um, a relatively small beer tent, it's not going to be a big one like you'd see at the Fourth of July. And it's going to be more for uh, target, towards the target audience of people that come to the market, Farmers Market, not a uh, obsequious party tent or anything like that sorts. So um, um, and if it can add value to the event and maybe even add a little bit of income stream to the event, uh, that'd be great. But overall, it's for the ambiance. So any questions for me onto that?
We've done this in the past.
Yeah, we kind of did this with Civil War Living History Days when we first started it. The FHA had, um, FFA had a beer tent.
That's, yeah, that's what I was going to say, at least in my, in my time here. That's the other event that I can uh, point to that had a uh, a beer tent or beer garden, or however you want to phrase it, in North Goodrich Park that was not uh, enclosed within the, the community house. So just a couple of other points to add uh, to Derek's comments and Jenny's comments as well. So Derek and, and Tyler uh, met with myself, Chief Mark Ward, um, Mark Langer, I think was there and, and Jenny Salvo to talk about this. So um, you know, we were able to kind of talk through the process with them. Um, as you may recall, uh, you know, at the onset of the Farmers Market, you know, we were really hoping that the Farmers Market would be in North Goodrich Park. And as Derek pointed out, um, you know, Tyler um, kind of noticed that as time went on too. So we appreciate him moving that up to North Goodrich Park. The Beer Garden is an additional amenity. It won't be uh, a kind of a free-for-all throughout the entire vendor area. It'll be restricted to just a, a small fenced in area shown as the site plan. Um, Chief Mark Ward was involved in that conversation and indicated that he would, uh, you know, that that would be the preferred approach. So um, this has been thought out and discussed, but ultimately it's the council's decision. But I just wanted to give a little bit more background, uh, so folks understood kind of what's on the agenda tonight. It really is the, it is the inclusion of the alcohol that requires the council's approval.
Um, I'll just go around and, oh, attorney?
And just to note that since this is being applied for in conjunction with a special event permit, which I understand to be correct, that pursuant to subpart D of the ordinance, the uh, there can be an additional area for the serving and consumption of beer in this case, as long as it's located adjacent to the structure for which the permit is issued. In this case, the permit being issued for the community house and then it would be, as I, it's proposed to be located adjacent to the community house according to the submitted drawing, as I see. So if, if the council wishes to approve that as part of the special event permit, then that would be uh, consistent and allowed by city ordinance.
Thanks. Trusa, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I thought it's, it's a nice idea and uh, nicely laid out. So, thank you.
Devin?
No questions.
Larry?
Um, the only, the only thing I would add is I would like it to be in a visible location, you know, visible meaning able to keep an eye on who's coming in and out. Because you can get a pretty big crowd. I, I'm excited about it being held in the park because I think you're going to have more people coming and um, because things won't be so jammed together as they might have been in another location. So that said, I don't have a problem with the tent per se, so.
Bill?
No, I'm fine.
Linda?
I think it's great. Done a lot of work on it, built it up from last year and I think it'll be a success.
Brian?
No questions or comments?
Okay, is there a motion?
I would move approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Anything else for anybody?
Right, just a clarification, we're approving the plan as presented then, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Wishing you good luck for your first Farmers Market opening.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Yep, thank you.
All right, more exciting stuff. Discussion and possible action regarding stormwater utility user fees and modification of the assessment requirements for curb and gutter.
Well, you know, you work in government when you say that that's exciting stuff. Unless you were referring to the previous item.
I'm, no, I love local government. It's on my heart.
Uh, I, I'm going to turn this one over to Mark, uh, Mark Langer.
So we have, in Milton have had a stormwater utility that was implemented in 2009. The rates were last reviewed in 2012. Um, the current rate review basically takes a look at um, existing costs over the last several years. Um, necessary permit requirements that we have to follow, costs to do that work. And um, the existing equivalent runoff unit charge, which is how our stormwater utility collects its fee. Um, and we calculated what that would need to be to do the items that were listed uh, as far as um, existing maintenance, again, based on historical costs, the recent historical costs, the proposed capital improvement plan, um, the cost included in there. And then as well as creating a um, equipment replacement plan for our stormwater related equipment. Uh, we use the 10-year cycle for stormwater equipment. Current rates are 6288 per year, you per year, the proposed rates. Um, if adopted, would go to 9338 per year, you per year. That's an approximate, that's approximately 254 per month. Per, per year you. Uh, another item that's built into this rate um, review is eliminating the assessment for the curb and gutter uh, replacement projects. Uh, we would not change the assessment policy for streets where there is currently no curb and gutter or. Uh, we would not change the assessment policy for streets where there is currently no curb and gutter or curb gutter has not existed in the past. So those would still be assessed. However, um, the majority of the projects that we've done recently anyway. We've had assessments for replacing, you know, some number of feet of curb, you know, ten or twenty feet or whatever the number is in front of a residence. And then that would be assessed back to the homeowners or the property owner at fifty percent of the cost. There's a couple items on the agenda here to do this if you like to proceed. Otherwise, trying to answer any questions you have.
Bill, any questions? Bill, I think you're on mute. Now I can't find Bill, there he is, okay.
I would, uh, move approval of resolution twenty-two oh eight. Uh, establishing equivalent runoff unit charge.
Bill, do you have any further questions?
Oh, no, I, I thought, uh, I thought you wanted me to move it as, as, uh. Public Works, that's all.
I'm flexible, I'm flexible, you know that. Larry, questions or comments? We have a motion and a second.
Yeah, I just, um, I want, I just a little clarification, Mark, if I could. If, if that rate is not adopted, the rate that's being proposed. At some point then, the, our fund would not be solved, correct? Is that a fair assumption?
Yeah, I mean, at this point, um, well, for one, we wouldn't be able to fund the fifty percent. Of the assessment portion, but also costs have increased for different things, you know, maintenance equipment. Uh, right now, we do have some borrowing that we're paying for. Uh, when that, when that borrowing is paid off, you know, additional equipment is needed, we'd have to evaluate how we would fund that. Um, additionally, there's not a lot built into the existing rate structure for other capital improvements such as, you know, storm sewers or carbon gutters. Yeah, I think generally in the past, it's been funded through a little bit of surplus or other means, I'm not exactly sure, but, um.
Exactly. Yep, that answers my question. The second thing I would request is if should it pass, I would. Encourage that we give a, a really good explanation of, you know, what this means because it's, it's actually a benefit to the property owners. To do this rather than being a. You know, if they just look at the increase, they might not realize what's all included in it, that's my point.
Sure, thanks Larry.
I'd have to evaluate, um. Costs specifically, but for example, last year, you know, if you had ten feet of curb and gutter replaced and it was a. The assessment was thirty dollars per foot. For example, you know, somebody's going to pay a hundred and fifty dollars just for that ten feet.
Exactly.
Project, so, and that's. Anywhere that there would be an assessment potentially. And this also did go before Public Works Committee last week and they forwarded a favorable recommendation for. Both the resolution and the ordinance change.
Okay.
I think the important things to note in this, um. You know, obviously, nobody ever wants to see increases in fees. Uh, but you know, in this case, a two dollar and fifty-four cent per month fee, this is the first time we've raised the fees in over a decade. Um, wha, you know, what's the last thing that you purchased ten years ago that's the same price today, you know, it just. It, it's, it's long overdue, but you know, being mindful of that. You know, the cost of increased, health insurance has increased, you know, we gotta, we have to match. Reality with, with what we're charging, but. You know, the, the big takeaway that I see in this and the major benefit to the community is we are doing away with the fifty percent assessment. That is incredibly common in most communities to do fifty percent assessments, so we would be unique in that regard. But, uh, it's certainly a benefit to, uh, the property owners. Uh, you know, when discussing this internally, I, I use this example, we had a property on Greenman Street. Curb and gutter sunk. Um, you know, through no fault of anybody other than Mother Nature, curb and gutter sinks. In the springtime, water pools pooled up over the curb because it had sunk. Got onto the sidewalk, created a, you know, you know, a, a challenging situation. Property owner says, hey, city, can you fix that? And city says, yes, but you need to pay fifty percent of it.
Right.
It just doesn't seem right, especially considering the water. That's pooling there, isn't that property owner's water, it's his neighbors and his neighbors' neighbors and his neighbors' neighbors' neighbors and his neighbors' neighbors' neighbors. And, uh, you know, it just, it's a more equitable approach to do away with that fifty percent assessment. Uh, again, it's a longstanding practice that the vast majority of communities use, but you know, we're trying to. Trying to be better, trying to do, uh, you know, be thoughtful and mindful for the future, so. Yeah, you know, it's a, the two dollar and fifty-four cent increase on a per month basis is certainly better than. A hundred and fifty dollar assessment that Mark just referenced that somebody may get whacked with for, for no, for no fault of their own. Because they exist on a, in an address that has, uh. Curb that needs to be replaced, so.
Brian, any questions or comments?
Uh, not anymore.
Linda? No, no questions, thank you. Devin?
No questions.
Teresa?
No questions, thank you.
All right, there's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding resolution two thousand twenty-two oh eight establishing equivalent runoff unit charge.
Is that the item that was just approved?
Yeah, that's the one that we just approved, we're onto the ordinance.
Yeah, so item eight was, was kind of the item that. Introduced item nine and ten, so the motion that Bill made was, uh, was to approve resolution two thousand twenty-two oh eight. Uh, which is item number nine, so, so then the next item on the agenda would be item number ten, which would be the ordinance. Uh, addressing the assessment issue that we just spoke about, so.
So two thousand twenty-two dash four ninety-one concerning assessments for public works improvements, so. Okay, so eight, nine and ten are essentially.
Yeah, eight.
All one subject matter.
Yep, eight effectively introduces nine and ten, yeah.
So you, there really isn't anything left to say, right? Every, we've said all there is to say on this one for the most part.
Uh, yeah, unless there's other questions that folks want to ask, certainly, I don't want to make it feel like people don't have the opportunity.
Okay. So a motion.
So again, this, this effectively changes the assessment process, that's what this ordinance does. The resolution established the new fee, which was just approved. The ordinance, uh, changes our assessment process to reflect the, in essence, the removal of the fifty percent assessment, so. Sorry, I jumped ahead of you there. Or on top, in between.
I would move approval of ordinance four ninety-one curb and gutter, uh, repair assessment.
I would second that motion.
Are you gonna wave second and third?
Uh, that's the intent, uh, wave second and third and adopt.
I would.
Attorney trader, is there anything you wanted to add to that? Okay. All right, so everybody got that motion and the second? Anything for anybody? All right, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. Moving right along, discussion and possible action regarding ordinance two thousand twenty-two four ninety-two annexation petition for Park Place Investments from the town of Milton.
So this is the annexation petition that was filed by Park Place Investments, owner Chris Roach, who is present this evening virtually. This annexation petition, uh, was filed with the state of Wisconsin and, and approved and also approved by the town of Milton. And effectively annexes, uh, forty-nine acres of land into the city of Milton. Mr. Roach intends to, uh, develop that, that acreage with single and two family homes. Uh, upon annexation, it'll be zoned R two and, uh, if, if approved, the next steps of the process would be Mr. Roach would finalize. Uh, a phasing and development plan for that area. Uh, some of the, some of the questions that we have received at City Hall is if that land is developed. Um, you know, who would be responsible for, uh, infrastructure improvements and ultimately that would be the responsibility of the. Of the property owner, uh, which in this case would be Mr. Roach and would be addressed through a residential developers agreement. Uh, other than that, we have received no objections, uh, to this, uh, annexation petition. Um, and we would be in support of it as it is congruent with our long-range comprehensive plan for development of, of single-family homes in this area. Uh, subsequently, this item was reviewed, uh, by the Plan Commission earlier this evening and forwarded with a favorable recommendation to the council.
Great, any questions or comments?
I have a question.
I just to say, Larry, did you say no?
I, oh, no, I do not, thank you.
Okay, Linda?
I'm sorry, didn't hear you say Larry.
I didn't hear it either.
Oh, you guys are supposed to tell me when you can't hear me, like you can see, I look moving, right?
Okay. Isn't this, I, I thought that this development was a condo association. And if that's the case, isn't there other steps that we or this developer? Has to take?
No, the development would be just a traditional single-family home development similar to what we see up at Red Hawk Farms. The developer has indicated that he would like to have a condominium type development on the north end of it. Similar to what currently exists there in the Bowers Lake condominiums, uh, that have been around for, uh, twenty plus years. Uh, but if that is the case, that would be addressed during the time of, uh, of subdivision plant approval. There wouldn't be any other steps necessary, even if there was a condominium development per se. Other than approval of a, of a site plan and or, um. Plat and a, and a potential rezoning to a PUD. But a condominium association doesn't require any, uh, any separate approvals from the city of Milton.
For annexing, I mean, we're just annexing.
Yeah, we're just saying it's in the land at this point, yeah, yeah.
I just, I wasn't sure if that was an active association or not. Didn't know if there were any comments.
Well, well, right now it's a golf course. So.
Not much fun.
Yeah, so unless the squirrels have an association, I don't, I don't, I don't know if we could govern them.
Thanks Linda, Teresa?
No questions, thank you.
Devin?
No questions.
Brian?
No questions.
Bill?
No questions.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance. Two oh two-two dash four nine-two annexation of Park Place Investments.
Wave the readings?
Yes.
We'd wave this in third reading and move to adopt.
Yes.
In case I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 So anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries, discussion and possible action regarding resolution two thousand twenty-two oh nine, creating city of Milton Ward ten.
So, uh, I'll let Jenny take this, but this is in direct relation to the annexation that was just approved. So.
So since this area is not in the same Rock County Supervisory District, so the boundary is the city of Milton. Then we do need to create a new ward, um, what this essentially means is we are without a new board. If there was any residential district, um, and houses that are put in this, we will have a different ballot and they will be in that. Just different district until the next redistricting process in ten years.
So effectively what that means is Bill's kingdom did not get any larger with this annexation.
That is true.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash oh nine.
I'll second, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries, presentation of municipal, of annual municipal separate storm sewers. MS four permit, I just feel like I haven't seen this presentation in a really long time.
Probably been about a year, um, so we're required annually to submit this, or not to, well, to submit it to the DNR, but also to. Um, present it to the public, uh, so we do that here at an open forum, uh, at a public meeting. Um, there's no action required, if there's any questions, um, can talk about those and.
Brian, any questions?
Nope.
Bill?
No questions.
Teresa? Teresa? Okay, Linda?
No questions, I'm sorry.
You're good. Devin?
No questions.
Larry?
I, I just had a, a thought and I, I was wondering if, has it, Mark, was there any major changes to the. What the DNR was looking for in this report, I had read some articles a while back. That sounded like they were making some changes, but I was just curious from your perspective. If, if you saw that or not, so.
Um, this, this report follows the same format as previous years.
Okay.
As far as other items that were in, included in our permit last year, we did have to review our stormwater model. That was a requirement that was included, as well as, um, we're in the process of reviewing other MS four requirements, um. That are included as part of the permit, um, stormwater prevention items, there's a laundry list of things, but.
Yeah, that might have been the article I was reading, that there might have been talking about that, so, I appreciate it, thank you.
All right. We'll move along then, thank you for the presentation of that. Okay, discussion and possible action direction. On application for bipartisan infrastructure law funding. This is new.
This, um, is related to funding that has been recently, um. Or, or, um, the applications have been recently, um, released to local governments. Milton is included in an urban area, uh, with Janesville, so there are some different restrictions that other communities our size don't always have to, um. That they don't have to follow, uh, we have to. For the eligible streets, they have to be collectors or arterials, there's a list here of eligible streets in Milton. Um, we have staff, uh, reviewed the segments that are eligible based on. Existing condition, last improvement year, other needs such as, um, utility work that may be required. Um, this funding will only pay for street related work, it will not pay for utility related work, um, that's considered non-participating, so any project. That, um, we were, we would apply for, if there was utility work required, we would have to fund that. Um, using utility revenues or, or the appropriate revenue outside of this grant funding. Reflecting highways are not eligible, so North Clear Lake and Madison Avenue in front of like Quick Trip, that. That area is not ineligible, um, street for this funding source. This was presented to Public Works Committee and they, um. Provided a favorable recommendation, uh, for the funding applications. What, what we have determined is that High Street. Between John Paul Road and Janesville Street, West Madison Avenue. Between the city limits and Clear Lake, which is in front of West School and Hilltop Drive are probably. The three best candidates, uh, we can apply for more than one. But there's no guarantee we will get any funding, uh, we also do have to fund a portion of this with local dollars. The max funding amount that we can apply for is eighty percent. So if there's any questions?
Bill?
No questions.
Teresa?
No questions.
Linda?
I'm, I'm glad for the streets that you, you have come up with, I was just wondering though, how many roads do we still have? With that two pacer rating? Do we have a lot?
I can't answer that off the top of my head, I know there's a handful, um, a couple of them are going to be addressed here this summer with, um. Woodcrest and Chapel, I believe those were, at least Woodcrest, I believe was a two, um. I think Anderson Lane might be a two, but I, I can't remember all the ranking, the pacer ratings in the streets. Certainly look into it for me if you wanted to know.
I was just wondering it, how many others? I was just wondering it how many others we had because most of these are higher numbers, so.
Yeah, and the the improvement um for example, a lower pacer rating requires more extensive work generally, so it'd be a reconstruction potentially, which would be a higher cost project. Could do pavement replacement, which is um hopefully extending the life of that infrastructure at a lower cost. So necessarily be applying for full reconstruction for these projects.
Thank you. Devon?
I don't have any question.
Ryan?
No questions.
Bill? I already asked you, Bill, right? Okay. Is there um a motion then? To um direct staff to apply for this?
I would move with direct staffs to apply for the um, let's see, um bipartisan infrastructure law funding.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
I.
Does anyone to post? All right. File that paperwork.
Great opportunity. Yeah.
Discussion and direction regarding mobile businesses in the city of Milton. Well, we haven't talked about this in a little bit.
Exactly, yeah. The so as I pointed out in the memo, uh an ordinance was created back, I believe in two thousand and twelve that governed mobile businesses uh what are kind of more commonly referred to in the parlance, the time of of uh food trucks. Uh the city has obviously seen an increase in the amount of food trucks that are in our region and that want to be involved in special events and that want to set up shop uh in in Milton or uh be a part of private events. Um as the ordinance is currently written and which was adopted in two thousand and fourteen, I'm sorry. It it is rather restrictive. And I understand the rationale behind that uh back in in two thousand and fourteen. Uh but because of the increased uh amount of requests and based on the change to our special event permit process that we did last year, we wanted to bring this back before the council to see if there was any uh comments, questions, concerns, or direction in regards to how food trucks are are governed in the city of Milton. Right now, you anybody who has a food truck who wants to set up uh in the city of Milton that is not part of a private event would need to be licensed by the city of Milton and that would carry a six hundred dollar fee. Um so in in the event that somebody wants to have you know, a variety, I guess, uh approaches because food trucks are very popular now, uh they would need to have that uh uh permit if they're gonna if they're going to be in public space. Is that correct, Jenny?
It is, but I'm actually going to add a little bit more uh because one portion that is relatively restrictive and has actually turned people away from being in the city is because a site plan has to be reviewed and approved. Um so it every time that they have a site plan, it needs to come back to the city and then um approved by myself and it has to be that particular location. So that includes a private property or if it is on public property. And so that's if, let's say, a truck wants to be at Piggly Wiggly on one day and then wants to be at City Hall another, they have to come back for that approval um for each time and then change their application. Their application is only good for that location until they change it again. So that has become relatively restrictive um compared to other ordinances in other municipalities.
Cool.
So we don't have a recommendation per se. We don't uh we're we're wanting to know if the council wants to see recommendations, um wants to see changes, or if everybody just says, hey, what we've been doing for the last twelve plus years, working just great and let's keep on keeping on.
Larry?
I I would like to see a a more of an annual approach to it um along with recommendations that you might have as as staff uh because again, I I do, like you say, I travel about quite a bit with my volunteer work and other work and I see food trucks quite a bit and and I think it's a good benefit to the communities when they're located there, so. An annual process would probably be more less cumbersome than what Jenny said people are experiencing now, so that's my thoughts.
Thanks, Larry. Ryan?
Kind of agree with what Larry was saying. Yeah, and I don't really have any other comments at this time.
Linda?
Yeah, I I agree with Larry too. Um I I think that we've seen a lot of successes with the food trucks that we've had in town and so I would like to see updates, maybe give us some more information and other ways that we can make it simpler for them, a little more comparable to some of our small, small cities.
Devon?
I I would agree with what's being said.
Bill?
Nothing new to add.
Teresa?
I do agree with what Larry says, but I also recall the uh discussion when we first developed this uh policy or um and why we did. Uh there was a problem with with the food trucks, the the couple that were coming into Milton. And I wonder if there could be some type of statement it added to it that uh allowed uh someone to say something from someone from the city to say something and intervene if there was a problem with the location of the food truck and so that it had to be moved if it was interfering with local businesses in some fashion. Uh you know, it it the I remember one of the food trucks was parking uh right on top of a school uh during the dismissal and uh it just became unsafe and inappropriately parked during the that time of the day. And there were other complaints from some of the restaurants right along that that part of the uh street. So I don't know if you I don't know how other people think about that, but otherwise it's uh yeah, I think it's great to open it up a little more than than what this does.
So is there a motion?
Lisa, I don't know if you want uh Dave is here. I believe Dave's here for this item, so I I just didn't know if you wanted.
Dave, did you want to comment?
Yeah, actually I had a couple of questions about this ordinance. Excuse me. Um Dave Walker from Charles Coffee. We do have uh actually a coffee shop, a bakery and a food trailer, a coffee trailer and in defining a mobile business on this ordinance uh under section fourteen dash seven oh one, it defines a mobile business meaning means a for-profit business which has no permanent address in the city and which is selling goods from a motor vehicle, trailer and food cart. So I was wanting clarification on that because we do have two places of business in the city and a food truck, so um how I read this is we don't fall under this ordinance. Is that correct? Is that miswritten? Is that?
I think that that is an excellent question and and one of the many reasons why I think we should take another look at this ordinance. Uh I think you know, Dave, I don't have an answer to your question. Honestly, I it it has not been asked of me. I think I would I would defer to Attorney Schrader to take a look at that since I think he was probably here when this was written. I assume he was. Yeah, again, I think that that's that's a great question and one of the reasons why we may want to revisit this. Things have changed in how food trucks are operated and and the prevalence of food trucks and the services they provide uh and uh it's always good to review things from time to time and probably one of the things that we should look at when we're looking at this.
Okay, because for example, the high school asked us to bring our trailer down for an event for the staff, which we did. And did did they need to get a permit for that for us to come down there? Is another question.
I can answer that one. They did not because it was only open to the staff.
Yeah, it was a considered a private event that served only.
That was considered, okay. So even though it was on school property, it was a private event.
Yes, because school property is considered private property to us and so they are able to do that as long as it's not open to the public. If they said, yes, anyone can come and they advertise it as a public event, then that's where it comes in. And so the with our special event process, um as I'll mention with the change, it used to be that we could someone could fill out a special event permit for the school if they had a specific day that they it was an actual event and it would fall under that rather than having a separate license for the food truck. But now because we do no longer permit events that are on private property um then that don't have a liquor license, then it we don't have access to that. So then a food truck would have to get a license anytime they do that with our current ordinance.
I could I can give you another example in which this this um I don't want to say caused consternation, but but um provided a a challenge for us to 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 govern it. Um without using any proper nouns, there was a local business who invited a food truck onto their property with the, I think, um purpose of saying, hey, workers of this business, feel free to go out and and have some some food at this food truck. That food truck, reasonably so, also advertised on Facebook that they were open to the public. The first half of that equation made them in compliance with our ordinance. The second half of that equation made them in conflict with our ordinance. But we didn't really want to send, you know, send a police officer over there and say, okay, show me your work I D person. Uh and anybody who doesn't have a work I D, you can't eat here. It just it just seemed so you know, overreaching at that point. We kind of just were like, ah, you know, okay. So be it. And that was that was a real situation. That just happened last summer.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, I hope there's some uh is there going to be any opportunity for businesses to comment on this process or is does that make any sense? Or is it going to be the city council that just looks at this and?
So I think typically, uh well, if council directs staff to do some research and uh bring some information back that that would be posted on the council agenda the next time that it's on the agenda. Um and businesses could um come and comment just like you have.
Okay.
So the agendas typically come out on Friday for a Tuesday meeting. I would say we could we would call you, but I can't I can't really promise that we're going to call everybody that wants to know when a council agenda comes out, but
Oh, no, I totally understand.
Just keep your eyes open for that. And is there any other questions or comments on this?
I guess I got one.
Bill?
Yeah, um the way that uh Dave was reading that, it makes it sound as if um there was uh perhaps a purpose of um saying we prefer food trucks um from folks that have other business in town. So you know, a restaurant, a uh a coffee establishment and so on. And I I kind of like that idea. Uh I'm not at all against uh you know, having uh food trucks and uh you know, Lord knows I've I had uh some food truck food from the uh library events uh uh on occasion. Um but you know, I I think the idea that there be some preference to um uh food truck owners uh that have a place of business in Milton is probably a good idea. What that difference is, I'm not sure, but uh as um city staff looks at it, I'm in favor of that idea.
Anything for anyone else? Linda?
It it seems to me when we were discussing this the last time, there were also a lot of questions about the parking because of the space that the food trucks take up. And that was in a reference to the downtown, so I just there's something for staff to think about as you review.
Yep, and it'll the information they find, they'll they'll bring it back to the council because ultimately the council has to make any recommendations for changes.
Do you want that motion?
Sure.
All right, I'll make the motion that staff prepare further information for regarding mobile businesses in the city of Milton.
Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
I.
Does anyone to post? All right, we'll look forward to that coming up on a future agenda. Okay, discussion and possible action on resolution two thousand twenty two ten, establishing funding commitment for purchase of ambulance and associated cot.
So this is a resolution that essentially reaffectuates the decision that the council made. Um well, I guess technically first made uh back in the fall of twenty twenty, uh but then subsequently reaffirmed it uh in in February February of this year uh to purchase another ambulance and the associated cot uh to be utilized by the Edmonton or by the Milton Fire um department. Although a resolution isn't necessarily required, um the town of Milton is preparing one and we thought it would be appropriate to uh follow suit yeah in the event that a question comes up about uh if 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 a decision was made, was it made in accordance with the council, so.
Any questions or comments from anybody on this? Is there a motion? Linda?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty two dash ten, establishing funding commitment for purchase of ambulance and associated cot.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
I.
Anyone to post? All right, that motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Review of two thousand twenty one building permits.
Yes, I will take that one. Uh so in our ordinance, there is a requirement for the building inspector to keep a record of all of the building permits and then provide an annual report to the common council. Uh so we're a little behind on that, uh but we do have that report attached. Um so I just wanted to give you a couple of updates with in July of two thousand twenty one and the city transition to working with general engineering company exclusively. They were for several years, they were doing the commercial building permits, but with Howie's impending retirement. Then we switched to general engineering company for residential too. Uh so it's a relatively smooth process at that point. Um and so uh the report there is from January first through December thirty first and one item that I will point out, though, is that because of the lead service repair, waterline repairs were already sent out, the information was given to all of the contractors. We did continue in-house that cost um and did not transition to general engineering's costs and we will for the future if we get that grant again.
So there is no action required. This is just an annual process that we present this to the Public Works Committee and to the Common Council. It's also kind of, in my opinion, just a nice overview of what happened in our community last year in terms of building and uh you may recognize some of those numbers at the bottom of the uh of the document. Uh because I utilize those numbers in my year in review presentation two weeks ago, so. It's one of the sources of information we use when we see how we are developing and growing and in what sectors.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you for the presentation, Jenny. Um eighteen, discussion and possible action regarding transition to in-person meetings. We had talked about returning the second meeting in April. Right?
Yeah, that so we had this this uh we had this discussion on last uh uh meeting's agenda and the direction at the time was to place this on a future agenda to make a more formal decision. Um at at the time, it sounded like the at least at the time, the um consensus was to do so at the second meeting in April. at the second meeting in April, which would, which would be April. I get, I get thrown off because our first meeting in April is on a Wednesday, so I wanted to make sure I was doing the math right. So, so long as that is still the consensus, if, if, unless there's another thought, um, we will prepare uh, accordingly to re-invite everyone into city hall on Tuesday evenings on the first and third Tuesdays, starting April nineteenth.
So is everybody, um, comfortable with that? We can always revisit this at any time. Like if there's just a weird surge after spring break. And people are like, whoa, yeah, like, uh, I don't really want to be in person around you people right now. Like, we can always revisit it. I'm never going to say like, oh, we can't revisit this or we're not going to talk about it, or there's certain criteria to talk about it. Like, this is about everybody's safety and that has to be the number one concern. So, um, if you want to make a formal motion to, like, to come back in person on April nineteenth and then I have like all the committees follow that, right? That have been, uh, meeting by Zoom, that's fine. And just know that we can always revisit it, like, the pandemic is still the pandemic, it's still going on and it's still new. Like, we didn't know how to really go into a pandemic. We don't really know how to go out of a pandemic either, right? So there, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that, um, there's flexibility here and there will always be flexibility around safety. So Teresa, any questions or comments?
No.
Phil?
That date's fine with me.
Linda?
No questions.
Well, Devon, even though you will not be here, you still get to have a say. You could be like, no, I don't want this to happen. Ryan?
I'd say keep moving forward that date.
Larry?
Um, that, I'm fine. Uh, as you know, working in healthcare, I have to mask every day, so, um, I'm going to be wearing mine for a while and it is not in offense of anybody on the council or anybody attending the meeting, so.
No, and I encourage mask wearing, like, that is, that is a appropriate safety measure to take. And of course, we would welcome anybody that wants to wear a mask or doesn't want to wear, wear, wear a mask at this point according to our guidelines that we've adopted. So.
Otherwise, I'm good with the date, so.
Yep. Is there a motion then?
I would move that we return to in-person meetings on April nineteenth.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? All right. Um, now it's the Kelsey Show. And this is her favorite part of the city council meetings. Review of February financial statements.
The February financial statements are attached. Um, there's no, I don't see any red flags and there's nothing major that happened in February to point out, but I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments.
Does anybody have anything for Kelsey? I, I do think you guys should just make a concerted effort to have a list of a minimum of ten questions for Kelsey because she's not fully experiencing, you know, all you guys have to offer in your questioning skills.
When I do have a question, I do call her, so. In fairness, we try, we try, right, Kelsey, to get you, get you asking, answering questions, so.
Yes, I've had a few.
I have a question about whether or not we are still looking at the possibility of giving the gathering place in the Milton House any, anything that we might have had from that twenty-twenty-one budget. We haven't really reviewed that.
Yeah, we just, oh, I, I think Mark's.
Hey, go ahead, Mark. Yeah, Mark said, Linda, stop talking right now. That, that means stop talking.
But I will, what I will say is, I will answer your question indirectly while staying on the agenda. The February financials, uh, were finalized, which is what we are reviewing this evening. We just, uh, finalized our audit of twenty-twenty-one last week. And once that is finalized, we'll have a better picture for what the financials look like for year end twenty-twenty-one.
And then we'll. And we'll have Kelsey, you know, do a twenty-minute presentation with a slideshow and music and a pointer and it'll be in person. So, um, it'll be on the agenda, Linda, just watch for future agendas.
And cookies.
And cookies, if you're here. You may not be here to spend.
Right. There's an election coming up. There's three very good people that are running.
Hey, Mark is really going to cut you off now. Like, he's going to mute you. He's going to put you in the waiting room.
Yeah, and by the way, Linda, there's actually four really good people running too. Unless you weren't including yourself, so.
I was thinking, well, I don't want to upset Mark.
Okay, good, good, good. Because he might like, he might not be in a good mood for team building and we just don't want that to happen. Well, good job, Kelsey. Good job. Thank you.
February looks great.
But I just want to thank Linda for bringing that up because I do want to, I would, uh, under general items, I want to share with you that I got some correspondence um, from Keaton, from the Milton House. So I don't know, Linda, what, what you're doing here, but Keaton sent, um, a thank you to the council for the previous funding. And the Milton House's appreciation for all the support that the city of Milton has provided over the years. So thank you, Linda, for reminding me to share that correspondence. All right, committee reports. Who wants to go first?
I was gonna say historic preservation was going to be on Wednesday of last week, but then we had to cancel it. So, uh, next month, we will be meeting next month.
Oh, can I go backwards on the agenda, Mark? Can I go back to general items?
These are all general items.
Okay, all right. So I just didn't know, um, like Chief Pickering is here, so I don't know, like, we don't have a formal uh, agenda item for him, but if he just wanted to say hello or had any updates, that could be under a general item, right?
Mark, can I say hello? Is that okay?
You just did.
So I, 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 I will share, um, and again, these are all publicly noticed, um, types of things. Um, the Edgerton Fire Protection District Board, uh, is meeting on the twenty-fourth of this month. And one of the agenda items that it, it will be in closed session for them. But it is, uh, the review of the staff report, um, on the petition. So that's kind of a, a way of basically saying the staff report has been completed. Uh, it's going through its review process right now and obviously can't really talk to the items that are, that are in it. Uh, but the other thing that the board has asked, um, uh, legal counsel to do for them is prepare a draft MOU that would define if, uh, and I'm required to say if three times. Um, if the discussions would go forward, um, what kind of structure would that be under? And so, uh, the legal counsel is preparing that for their review as well. Um, and then just to kind of keep all of you up to speed on what's going on around you. And this is kind of a, a, a polite way of giving Milton and the township and Lima Harmony Johnstown, all of the municipalities that have come together. Um, a, a little bit of a kudos, you folks are well ahead of, of what is now turning into a crisis in this state. Um, in the last month and a half, we know of four emergency services organizations that have actually gone to their governing bodies and said, we, we just can't do this anymore. And, and we're ceasing operations at the end of twenty, uh, twenty-two. A couple of those are in southern Wisconsin. Um, so the challenges, um, are, are getting very, very intense for a lot of reasons. But again, I would just compliment everybody on the city council and then the fact that you work, you know, so closely and so collaboratively, quite honestly, with the other four, um, municipalities around you to get ahead of this. And, and it's, you know, you, there was some fortuitousness to, um, to your getting ahead of this before it turned into the crisis that it has elsewhere. So I guess those would be my comments.
You very much. And thanks for letting me go back to, to twenty. So now we're back to twenty-eight. Any other committee reports? Anything for anybody?
Fire commission tomorrow night.
Alrighty, staff reports. Kelsey, how'd the audit go?
It went well. They did their field work. They were here in the office for two and a half days. Um, nothing exciting from them, which is good. And a big thank you to everyone who helped me prepare for it. And I think it went smooth so far. So they're finishing up. And once they have their report finished, I will share it with everyone.
Just another thirty-minute presentation from Kelsey coming up. Thanks, Kelsey. Inga?
I don't think I have anything tonight. We're still working through the process of hiring a project coordinator for the Drug Free Communities Grant. We have a couple of interviews scheduled on Friday this week and then we'll continue moving through that process.
Thank you, Jenny. I just see you in the news all the time.
Oh, really?
And Dropbox is so controversial now.
It is, yes. And if anyone has any questions about that, uh, I did send that email out, so with all of the details, but just let me know. Um, it is election season, so we have absentee ballots were sent out on the tenth and we have two hundred and twenty-seven that were sent out. Uh, we, the week of March twenty-eighth, we will be visiting the Heartwarming House in Milton Senior Living uh, to conduct those absentee ballots, which we have eleven requests at this point. And then on another note, we will, we also have border review training. So, um, we'll be starting that and getting all of those members ready for the May eleventh border review.
I can't remember, um, and Mark E. can talk about this too, but I, I don't remember if we talked about the planning training that you all, a couple of you attended.
We, I brought it up in our last meeting.
Okay.
Um, so we talked a little bit about that. And then, uh, I actually do want to add one more thing about the election. So Town of Milton was relatively short on their poll worker staff. So Laura, the city clerk or town clerk, reached out and asked if we had anyone additional. And so Brenda Matthews is actually going to assist Town of Milton at their election. So it was great to be able to help, um, them. And especially since Brenda has worked if, with the city of Milton during elections. Um, she'll bring a lot of knowledge over there.
All right, perfect. Thanks. Anything else? Larry has a question for you.
Yeah, I do. Uh, can you tell me when the last day of in-person absentee balancing is accepted?
So that will be Friday, April first, and we will be open until five that evening.
Okay, just for people to know. Thank you.
Okay, um, library, Ashley.
Um, our Friends of the Milton Public Library book sale is going on through the month of March. And the last three days will be the two-dollar bag sale. I do want to note that part of the money raised will go towards a scholarship for graduating senior. And the, um, scholarship committee is actually meeting tomorrow, tomorrow to go through the applications. So that's very exciting. Next week, Tuesday at five-thirty, we are going to have a presentation about the history of Windsor Court. So I grew up on the streets and my mom is actually doing a presentation. So there will probably be embarrassing stories and photos of me during that, but we are recording it and we'll have, uh, up on our YouTube channel. Um, our Red Cross Youth Club, um, along with the Mountain Lions Club is pulling a blood drive on April fifteenth um, from ten to three at city hall. So you can go to redcrossblood.org to register for a time slot. And then I also wanted to share that we received a certificate, a commendation from Governor Tony Evers, um, for our contributions to the city of Milton. I believe all the libraries in the state received, um, rightfully received one because the libraries are pretty awesome. So that was very nice to receive. It'll look good next to our library of the year award.
It will. You're, you're going to have to have like a, a wall of awards.
That's, that's my hope and my plans, yes.
And then we can have like red carpet events there too. There's so many, so many opportunities.
I, I just wanted to comment on the, uh, Friends of the Library Scholarship. Uh, uh, I'm, uh, on that committee and, uh, read the applications. And, um, if anybody ever tells you that, uh, teens don't use libraries anymore and, uh, libraries are meaningless to teens, they should read these letters because um, they were just awesome.
We have some, we have some great library teams, that's for sure.
Thanks. Thanks for sharing that. Um, chief of police.
I have, uh, Governor Evers' news too. News released today that he's releasing a fifty-million-dollar public safety, um, grant project. Part of that is nineteen million dollars that is going to be split by every single and we are on that list. Our grant award is going to be in excess of twelve thousand dollars. Um, it was money I didn't know we were getting until today, so we don't have any direct plans for it right now. Waiting to see if there are any specific rules associated with expenditures, but, um, thanks to the governor for passing that along to us and the rest of the jurisdictions in the state.
Congratulations.
Maybe we could buy one and nine-sixteenths of a police car.
Maybe we could buy new tires for a police car.
Yeah, is that, it could probably be six or seven lug nuts. I don't know.
That's how a police car gets billed. One piece at a time.
It actually equates to half a gallon of gas right now.
That's so true, so true. That's why we're a walkable city. We encourage biking and walking within the city of Milton. And you can bike or walk anywhere in the city of Milton within a three-mile radius. I just want to remind everybody, you don't have to pay high gas prices if you live in the city of Milton.
And my wheelchair allows me to avoid spending a lot of money on gas when I'm around town, so.
That's right, that's right.
A good deal for me.
We're buying electric bikes for the police officers since they won't buy horses. See, horses look pretty good now, don't they? Saying, okay, Mark, Mark E., what do you got?
Um, been ready for spring here, so, you know, equipment maintenance and kind of away the winter equipment, we're starting to and, um, not totally because, you know, we could still get something here yet, but, um, I think we're looking up as far as the snow is concerned, um. We were, uh, awarded Tree City for six year in a row. Um, so that was nice. There was just regular, regular stuff.
I think Tree City is like one of the most exciting, like, this is the night of awards. Like, who knew? I mean, let's take note here, three awards. Please, trees and library, like, we have to celebrate our wins here. Okay, Al. I can't even find you on my screen. Are you here? Are you here, Al? Where is he? There he is.
Yeah, and I couldn't unmute. Um, just a couple of things. One, I, um, I think Kelsey is being overly humble in regards to the audit. I don't even think I actually shared this with her. Actually, I know I didn't share this with her. Uh, at the end of the audit, the auditor came in to me and commented about how impressed he was with Kelsey and how, uh, every time he had a question, she had an answer for it and he was shocked at how versed she was with the information with only being here since October. So, you know, in essence, she was only audited for about twenty-five percent of her time at the city of Milton, uh, but was able to cover one hundred percent of the last year. And he was really impressed with her, uh, just kind of overall knowledge and ability to handle the process. And, uh, so she's being humble in that she says she thinks it went fine and it was no big deal, so.
once again, I think just a testament to the great staff that we have and we continue to surround ourselves with great people. And Kelsey's on that long list. And with that being said, a number of us attended the Milton Area Chamber of Commerce Night with the Stars last week, and that was, that was fun. It's the first time since I've been here that we, City Milton got a table. I thought it was important that we did that since we had so many new faces to our organization. And, uh, you know, it's the first time they've had that, that event in person in two years. And, you know, it's kind of part of the overall thought process that I have that although we are government, we are human beings and that we have, you know, faces and thoughts and feelings and senses of humor. And so it was nice to kind of introduce, you know, Kelsey and Jenny and Mark Langer and, you know, even Ashley Conkle. I mean, unless you're a teen, apparently they, they don't know who she is. So, no. But it was nice to be able to, you know, talk and meet with those folks. The new executive director for the Chamber of Commerce was there that evening. Got to see a lot of great awards, get awarded to a lot of great people and a lot of great businesses. And it was a nice night and I'm glad that the city could be a part of it. And hopefully we can continue that trend. And Linda joined us and so did Keaton from the Milton House, so.
I just want to make sure that Mark Langer knows that he automatically has a spot to attend next year. And I just want to think, I want to thank everybody for going. And I do really appreciate the representation and the flexibility. And, you know, maybe next year we'll have two tables, right? Maybe I'll have two tables next year.
Yeah, somehow Scott Markport didn't make it. I'm not really sure how that worked out.
I just really hope the dinner was delicious. I really hope that dinner was delicious.
It was good, yeah.
My bottled water at the county board meeting was really good, too. Just want to say that right now.
The company was better.
I bet it was. All right. So I know you're really excited on, for team building. I know Chief Pickering really wants to do this and I really appreciate him staying for team building. This is going to be like a, I think it's a kind of a super easy one. You do have to, you have to choose one. You can't say either, or I don't want to do it, or you have to, you have to choose. Devin is going to go first and then Devin is going to call on somebody else to go after him.
Looks like popcorn.
We are doing, we're popcorn-ing it. Like I am not waiting for you all to volunteer. You're just going to get called on. So this is a question. It's a would you rather question? Y'all have done these before, like would you rather? Would you rather, where did I write it down? Okay. Would you rather be able to see into the future 10 minutes forward? Or 150 years forward into the future? So it's either 10 minutes or 150 years. There is no in-between. It's would you rather? It's not neither. You have to choose. And Devin, go ahead.
I'm gonna go 10 minutes.
And why?
I don't know that I want to see the future.
You don't want to see what happens in 150 years. Okay. So now you get to pick somebody.
I'm gonna bounce it right back to you, Mayor.
Oh, okay. I am totally like 10 minutes. The anxiety over 10 minutes is, is about all I can take. And 150 years, I, I don't want to know either. I, I just, I don't want to know what I'm going to reincarnate as. I don't want to know. So, um, so 10 minutes, that's it. I just want 10 minutes. Which I will promptly forget, you know, I can hardly go from one number to the next on the agenda. So you know how that's going to go for me. Okay, I'm gonna go with, I'm gonna go with Jenny.
So I am going to say 150 years. And because I'm curious what life would be like, I know that I will not be extremely effective because I won't be alive in 150 years, but at least I think it would be more interesting than what's going to happen in the next 10 minutes. So that's my answer. And I'm gonna choose Randy Pickering.
Who's that?
The old Edgerton connections die hard, don't they?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I am absolutely in the 10 minute perspective. Uh, because I grew up through the series of Back to the Future movies that prove to you, you do not want to know what your future is like in, in 150 years.
So true.
And we picked on Al. Is Al part of this? Can I pick on Al?
Oh, everybody, everybody.
Al's part.
All yours, Al.
Well, I'm gonna say 10 minutes. And, and you know, the question I would have, and you, you know, this is a game, so it doesn't really matter. How many times do you get to see into the future for 10 minutes? Because this I've made a lot of mistakes in my life. And if I had that ability to look ahead 10 minutes, I might have been able to avoid a couple of those. 150, I'm already dead. I'll choose Mark Langer. Because otherwise he's going to go last.
He doesn't answer to Mark Langer. He answers to Mark E. Oh, he just had this like big stare on his face. He didn't even know it was his turn.
I know.
Been here.
Oh, yeah, Mark Langer, yep.
Yeah, that's my excuse. Um, I, I'm gonna say 150 years and it's with the goal or the hope that all of us got something right. And it's still going. I'll go with Larry.
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna say the 10 minutes and only because with my clients as a therapist, I often say if you live in the past, you've experienced depression. And if you worry too much about the future, you experience anxiety. So the 10 minutes keeps me from getting a little too anxious perhaps. Versus 150 years, I'd really probably get pretty worked up, so. Oh, I gotta pick somebody. I'm sorry. Uh, let's see. This is the tough one. It's really hard to know. How about right next to me? How about Teresa?
Okay, I think I would go with 150 years. I I don't want to know what's going to happen in 10 minutes. But I think it would be wonderful to find out what is eventually happening because of what we're doing now. Is, is there a consequence? Or is there something that we really have done to make something happen down the road? So, um, okay, Ashley.
I'll go with the 10 minutes because I don't want the responsibility of knowing what's happening 150 years from now. So that's just too much pressure. Um, Inga.
So I look 150 years in the future and then I jump back to now and then I can affect things, right? So I think I'm going to go with 150 years because then I could like check on maybe my kids' kids and make sure that they're doing okay. And then if I need to pivot a little bit in the present, I can do that.
Right.
Go back to the future.
Yes, definitely. Back, back to the present. I don't know. Um, I'm going to, who hasn't gone? Kelsey?
I'm going with 10 minutes because I need to know what's coming at me. And Linda, have you gone?
No, I haven't. And I agree. I'm going with the 10 minutes. I really, looking so far into the future would make me too nervous. I might think there might be too many things going on. So I'll just take the 10 minutes and a little bit at a time here. And I will choose Chief Markwork.
I will do 10 minutes and I will specify the 10 minutes before the big powerball draw. I'll take it then.
There it is.
That is so smart of you. So smart of you. Okay, we need to like do a little collection. Everybody put in a dollar. We all need to get in that house. And then y'all are gonna quit. I'm gonna quit too. I'm gonna be like, yeah, I'm not mayor anymore. Out of here. Okay, chief.
Uh, let's see here. How about Annette?
I'm gonna go with the 10 minutes. I kind of liked Inga's idea unless we get to 100 years, 150 years and it's unchangeable and then I'd be anxious and depressed the whole time. So I'm sticking with 10 minutes. And I will take Bill.
I'm, I'm gonna go with 150 years. Lots of you know that I read a lot of history. And I'm always suspect of history that's been written recently. Uh, so when I'm reading about presidents, I kind of discount anything that's not 20 or 30 years old because we don't have enough perspective. So if I was out 150 years, I could kind of look and see what historians are saying about now 150 years from now. And I think would be really neat. And let me see, I'll pick Eric.
Okay, I'll go with the 10 minutes. Uh, but I'm gonna visit some horse racing tracks with great success at choosing the winners along the lines of chief, but that I do. All right, Ryan. I don't think I heard you yet.
Nope, not yet. I would go 150 years because I don't really want to know what's in my future. Plus, if I knew 10 minutes in my future, I might get more anxious. Or, and I can feel like I can wait 10 minutes to find out what's going to happen. Um, so I'd rather see what's going to happen in the world. It's kind of the same thing as Bill mentioned where you, I love history and stuff. And in a way, looking 150 years in the future is kind of like history, you know, in a sense. I'll see what it's gonna be, life is gonna be potentially like then. And it gives me kind of a perspective on what life is like now. And Mark Schroder, you're up.
150 years. Similar to what Ryan and Bill stated by going into the future 150 years, it'll allow me to view the current time in a different context. So otherwise get trapped into looking at things the same way all the time. And then that would that would give some better perspective context as the two of you have mentioned.
So wait, it sounds like people are saying it's like they would like to have the opportunity to maybe go back and change things if they could. If something didn't, didn't turn out quite right. Some of you overwhelmingly were mostly 10 minute people.
We've got the, we've got the Gazette with us. Is the Gazette going to participate in this?
We try, we try. Are you there, Scott? Are you 10 minutes in the future already? Is the article already written? Can you just tell us what it says?
I will say if you go 150 years in the future though, you can have at least go back of who wins like Super Bowls and things for the time when you're alive. And as long as you hopefully write those down. But I did want to bring up, I sent Scott, Scott an email is that Powerball drawings do close. The ticket sales close 59 minutes before the drawing.
But there is, there's a little bit of a little gambling going on, a little bit of gamblers here.
Haven't you ever seen Lucky Numbers with Lisa Kudrow and John Travolta? Come on.
Well, let's just put it this way. If I did, I don't remember it.
Sting, right? It's another one.
Yeah, that's a great one. Robert Redford. Yeah.
Yep. All right. Well, again, successful team building. You guys did great. I, I learn more and more every week for the book that I'm writing. I will change your names. Alter situations a little bit, but you know, you're doing great. And we have years of doing this left, so. Woo-hoo. I'll donate everything back to, you know, a charitable organization. I guess, or buy Powerball tickets. I don't know. All right, our next meeting date is Wednesday, Wednesday, April 6th, 2022. After the elections, after the elections. So having said that, yes, Chief Pickering.
Mayor, and I apologize for doing this, but Teresa, there is an email here for you at City Hall about the topic we talked about a month or so ago. So that is here if you want it for tomorrow night's meeting.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for reminding her of that. Bill? Nothing.
I would move, we, I would move, we adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? All right, good job, you guys.